You're live.
Okay, well, welcome to our work session. Today is Monday, January 27, 2025. It's approximately 1:15 PM. And we'll go ahead and start with our work session. We'll start with jobs of the week.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Sarah Rainey. I am the one-stop coordinator for the Southwest Region of New Mexico workforce, soon to be America's Job Centers. We'll have more on that soon. For this week's jobs of the week, we have a deputy director for Parks and Recreation. That's for the city of Las Cruces, for 78,000, beginning at 78,000, and the posting closes on the 17th of February. For the city, we also have a water maintenance worker, too. That one starts at 18:07 an hour, and at this time, it's a continuous posting. We have for White Sands Missile Range, a residential maintenance technician, level three. That one, you'll have to view the posting to see on the salary ranges and when the job is closing. We have a clinic patient representative for behavioral medicine at Christus Health. That one begins at 31,000, and the posting closes on the 16th of February. We have for Sunbelt Rentals, a field service technician, level one, beginning at 18:45 an hour up to 25:36. The posting closes on the 16th of February. We also have for NMSU, a security officer, senior. Posting starts at 17:85 an hour and closes on the 16th of February. As always, you can reach us at 226 South Elamito Boulevard, again, from 8 to 5 PM. We no longer have that after-hours time anymore, but feel free to come and reach us during that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Next is pets of the week, and we have Carol.
Good afternoon. I'm Carol Nelson, the digital content specialist with the Animal Services Center of the Mesia Valley. As a reminder, our pets of the week are available at no cost during the week they are promoted. If you're interested in adopting an animal currently in a foster home, please contact the center to arrange a meet and greet. And long-term residents who have been at the center for three-plus months are available at just $25. So we have a lot of really good options for affordable pet adoption. This week, we have Taylor. Her number is 88936. She says, "I'm a friendly feline who has recently come to the center. Although I've only been here for a week, I'm already making a wonderful impression on the staff and volunteers. I'm a sweet girl who loves to purr and vocalize, and I enjoy making my presence known with my charming personality. I'm not shy at all. I confidently explore my surroundings and often perch myself on top of my tower, keeping an eye on everything happening around me. I would thrive in a loving home where I can feel safe and secure." In this week's dog of the week, we have Tony, 77537. "I'm a sweet little wigglebutt who's been here since I was just a pup. I'm full of life and love to bounce around, and I do need a little help with my excitement during walks. I tend to jump up when I'm eager to go. However, once I settle down, I'm a fantastic companion on the leash, and I mind very well. I would thrive in a home that can provide me with frequent outdoor time. I've been known to bark and bounce with joy, but don't let that fool you. I always enjoy quiet moments and snuggles." And to just highlight a few of our long-term residents, unfortunately, we still have the same four. So Dora has now been at our center for 383 days. Alice, 236 days. Mabel, 232 days. And Luna, 227 days. So we would really love to get the word out, to have people just come meet them and get to know them because they really are great dogs, and we'd love to get them into a home. This coming weekend, we will be at the farmer's market with our pets. And so come by and see the pets that we have there on the square. And then for our upcoming event on Sunday, the day after, we will be at the Field of Dreams parking lot for our drive-through vaccination clinic. And so it's a great time to get low-cost and free services. And then for Valentine's Day, we are going to be doing what we call the Cupid Shuffle Speed Dog Dating. And that's going to be from 12 to 2. So it's going to be a pretty fun event where people are going to have an opportunity to get to know various pets in a pretty similar fashion as if you were speed dating. So it's going to be a pretty fun event. So feel free to come on out to the center for that. And as always, you can find more information on our website or find us on social media. So thank you for the time today.
Thank you, Carol. We'll go ahead and start with our agenda items. 3.1, Senior Programs 50+ Community Assessment Survey Results Presentation. And to introduce it, it'll be Sonia Saldana.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council and city staff. My name is Sonia Saldana, and I am the deputy director for senior programs. And today, we are going to be presenting, or Dr. Johnson, Vic is going to be presenting on a senior survey that started back in 2021. And once, you know, once you are able to hear the presentation, we will stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you. I'll run through just some brief slides to walk through the report that we did for the city here. We had really the objective to speak with the residents age 50 and older. And we had some sub-objectives, which were identify the understanding of your current senior programs, the challenges that seniors face, and the concerns that they have with aging adults. So I'll walk through the major topics of the survey results here. Just quick background. We, in essence, we didn't have a contact list for seniors in the city, so we had to go out and do an outreach. We created flyers, both in Spanish and in English, went to senior centers, also put it in the utility bills to try and recruit seniors to completing the survey. Goal was to get 381 surveys. We actually ended up with almost 700 surveys, so close to double that. Demographics, majority of responses, close to 80% were between white, Hispanic, and Latinos. Women responded more than males. And then 70% of the responses were over 70 years old. So I'll quickly walk through just the results of the seven topics there. So the awareness. We asked seniors about the awareness of the nine major programs you're currently offering. And I just wanted to highlight. So there's about four that seniors were well aware of. But then there are five where you see they start to drop off, which is case management, homemaker services, aging, grandparents raising grandchildren, and respite care. So moving on, we also then asked them their usage. And to no surprise, those same five had the least amount of usage by seniors. You can see, on average, 4% for those five. So one of the recommendations we have at the end is potentially doing a better outreach to your seniors to inform them about these programs so that they're aware that these are available. We asked seniors why they never use the senior centers. One was lack of awareness. But two, a lot of seniors felt like they're already active right now, and they didn't really feel the need to go to the senior center. And then COVID, transportation, and then they thought they couldn't afford it. Topic two, home and living conditions. Most of the seniors felt very safe at home. I'm not going to go through each single question there. Topic three, safety, same thing. Most seniors felt very safe at home, very safe with their family. 41% did identify that they have fallen or had injuries. Topic four, in-home assistance. Similarly, the majority of seniors indicated that they didn't need any assistance with any in-home services. Now, I don't have it in the slides, but in the report we prepared, we did do an analysis of each age group. So I did like 50-year-olds, 60-year-olds, 70, 80, and 90-plus. There is a big difference between 50-year-old seniors versus 90-year-old seniors. So there is some of these items. For example, in-home assistance isn't as needed for 50-year-olds as it is for 80- and 90-year-olds. Same thing with like lawn care. You see the numbers go up. So there is some discrepancies there or some variances. But as a whole, they said that they didn't need any in-home assistance. Similarly, to transportation and mobility, they're very independent. Once again, when you break it down by age group, I believe the 50-year-olds mostly all drive, whereas 80-, 90-year-olds need more help with transportation. Health and nutrition. Seniors identified that they get enough exercise and get enough vegetables and fruits. Financial conditions, last major topic. We didn't identify any major issues that seniors identified with their finances. And we asked a number of different items. So a quick summary here. The biggest conclusion, I guess, from the survey was just the lack of awareness of all the senior programs. There are five, four programs that seniors were aware of. There are five that they're not aware the city offers. Satisfaction was very high. Most seniors identified that they felt very safe. They were very independent, had a reliable support system, felt that they were very healthy, highly active. We did ask in terms of reasons why they might not attend a senior center, and they felt there weren't enough activities being offered. A lot of them stated they wanted more pickleball time. They didn't want that to be interrupted with younger adults. They had a hard time finding pickleball courts. So, but you can see, there's a number of different activities that were identified in the survey. And then finally, to wrap this up, just recommendations. Once again, maybe improving awareness. Now, the downside of improving awareness is that if you start to get more seniors trying to sign up, it could potentially impact the services that are being provided. So that's kind of a funding issue. City should consider developing potentially more recreational activities versus the ones that are currently there at the centers. And then the final one is maybe doing a follow-up survey to dive into any of these areas you'd like to see further clarification on or to see if we've made any changes, what the improvements are. So Sonia, is there anything I missed that? Okay. So I know I went through that quick, but we've also provided the report. Oh, sorry.
So, council, mayor and council, this is our report on the survey. And we would now welcome any questions or comments you might have. Carol Bray, Quality of Life Director, for the record.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Dr. Sivak and Sonia. Any questions? Counselor Matisse?
I just, in looking at a lot of the facilities in Las Cruces, like the gym and Planet Fitness, I noticed they take Medicare for Pilates, yoga. Will your centers do that when you have the services offered?
Most, Counselor Matisse, most of the services that we offer are free of charge. And one of the reasons we do that is because we want to get as many people engaged as they can possibly come.
Okay.
But you're asking if we will specifically take Medicare or Medicaid as a form of payment?
Correct. In other words, still be free to them. You know, they wouldn't be charged. But they get a lot of benefits in wellness and health programs in these other facilities. So I was trying to see if you advertised, if you made that available, maybe you would have an increase in attendance. Just a thought.
We have not. We are not set up to do that for Medicare and Medicaid. But that's something that we can always look into the future to see. I know there's a big, in the past, I used to work with Medicaid, and it's a big setup. So we'll have to look and see what we can do.
Okay. Speaking of the future, can I ask you a crystal ball question?
Yes.
It seems that the seniors today, let's say from 1995 till now, that would be the 65 to 80-year-olds. Financially, we seem very, very stable and have money for exercise and different venues. What do you feel will be the future? Because it hasn't been that good in the last 10 years financially for a lot of underserved and people that are in the poverty level. And our poverty level has gone from 37% to 47%. And in that 10%, it's probably quite a lot of seniors. So what do you see in the future making programs and awareness of them and education and getting the information out? Electric bills or gas bills?
Yeah, that's one of the, that's how we did the initial outreach with the flyer, is to go through the utility bills. So we're able to advertise that way. Number of different questions. What do we see in terms of the future? I don't know. But in terms of when we broke down the age groups, once again, like I said, 50, 60, 70, 80-year-olds, the older-aged seniors were more financially stable than the younger seniors. So when you looked at the, those financial programs, more of the younger seniors were actually using them compared to the older seniors, which I think mimics what you just said there. In terms of what's going to be happening down the road, all I know from a demographic standpoint is that the Baby Boomers, which is the youngest, is in their 60s. Once they retire, the Gen Z's coming up, it's, they're going to be a different workforce. So moving them into, you know, if we do have programs, who's going to replace the current staff? That's going to be an issue. And not just for city services, but everywhere we're working with is having an impact in terms of labor shortage, workforce shortages. So in essence, just trying to bring more awareness and assuming you can put job postings out there, and you're going to get people that are going to jump on and try to help you with these services, I don't think that's going to be the future. I think we're going to have challenges recruiting people in all these positions. So I don't know if I answered all your questions or...
I realize it's hard to jump forward 15, 20 years. But I think it's good to have these reports and to have some profiling and some data because that impacts what we need to do, what centers we need to build, what programs we need to have if they are less financially capable. So, no, you answered everything. Thank both of you. Thank you.
Counselor Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you so much for your presentation. So you gave us percentages, but you didn't give us numbers. And also, so how, what are the numbers? And how do they compare with the populations in those age groups? Do you have that information?
We do have all the information. I don't have, I don't have it in the slides, but we have all the numbers, all the surveys, correct.
Okay. And then how did you, how did you distribute the call for information on, from seniors?
We did it in a couple different ways. One, we did it through the utility bill. And then it was distributed at senior centers, nonprofits, the libraries, city hall, farmer's market, grocery stores, pharmacies, city parks, communities.
So there's a possibility that your representation isn't
Correct.
the entire population.
And that that's in our report. That's one of the limitations. Is this is just if seniors are homebound and don't get out or they don't actually open and pay their bill, they might not have seen the survey. So that is a potential limitation of these results.
And only if I, I might be wrong about this, but you get a bill when you own the property.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
You get a bill from utilities when you own the property. So many seniors may not own property.
Correct.
So there's a lot of gaps and holes as to the population of people who are above the age of, what, 50, did you say?
Yes, above the age of 50. That is correct.
Yeah, okay. So my concern is that, I know that the city provides cool centers and maybe warm centers, depending on the season. And I'm wondering if all seniors are getting that information as well. I mean, I'm sure all the seniors who go to Munson or wherever get it. But what about the ones who really may be isolated? How do we identify them or reach them?
Counselor Flores, we do send flyers out. Mostly, everything that we do at the centers, we send them both out in Spanish and English just to inform our customers that there's other services available.
And is that a door-to-door handout? Or is...
We usually deliver those through our home-delivered meals. And those are only to those participants that are in our services.
Okay. And so in that distribution of information, do you encourage those who receive them to reach out to neighbors and distribute that information to neighbors who may not have, be on meals on wheels?
You know, we do, we do have case managers that also work with a lot of our homebound seniors. So when they go out to talk to the senior, they provide information. You know, we also deal with those that have emergency contacts, family members. We're just not dealing with the senior. We're constantly dealing with emergency contacts and family members or friends or any support system that supports the senior at home.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
One thing that Carol was mentioning is that we are doing a lot more on social media now. That's something that we're looking for into the future because we do realize the age gap. I always tell people, we serve people between the ages of 50 to over 100. And to get everybody to go online and do something is impossible. To get somebody to read something is impossible. So we're always trying to find what works for everybody. We still have a little newspaper that we distribute with all our information for those that don't want to go online. And then for those that do want to go online, there's information available.
Okay. I just, I think what you're doing is wonderful, absolutely wonderful. I just hope that, I know that there's a lot of isolation issues for seniors, especially those who are somehow, you know, not able to drive or walk and get out and that sort of stuff. But thank you very much for your services. Thank you, Dr. V.
Counselor Cora.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this presentation, and it was really powerful to learn. And I have to admit that I think I have a little bit of a gap in totally understanding all that you all do. So that's, that's on me. I would also say, I think, probably because when I read the channels of communication where those are going, those aren't the channels where I, right? Like, that's the difference between ages and where people get their information. But I was going to ask a couple of quick follow-ups. One of those would be, I think when we did our city councilor orientation, I think I got a little bit of senior programs, but I would love to amp a little bit of that up. So I hope that's also in things like our neighborhood leadership training and all of those trainings that we're currently doing, that folks really understand all the services that are happening because I think it's really powerful to hear that inventory of things. And then also, if we could just have a little bit of additional, I know we always get things, so we often get things related to public art and stuff that's happening. But I think I, when we have community meetings and/or, I know in my community meetings, especially, I think it's not as much people realizing that they might need the services, but we're thinking about other people needing the services. Or maybe they need the services, but it's easier for them to think about the other people needing the services. But I know I hear from a lot of residents that are really struggling through these things. And I think just knowing the contact information for a few resources within senior programs, I don't know if there is a formal outreach sort of, sort of thing that would go to like community meetings, district meetings, or perhaps, you mentioned the newspaper. Some other form that we could just be looped in on so that we can use that in our own networks to expand, either if staff can join us at certain things or if we can elevate the messaging that you all are trying to put out. Because I think, you know, really just having the contact information and understanding who's, that people are able to help navigate a lot of the resources that exist would be really useful. And I didn't, I don't know that I knew that we, that we had the power to do that. And so I would like to be able to share that information as much as possible, so.
Counselor Cora, we attend as many events as they invite us to. And we'll attend as many events as we get invited to. We're always trying to spread the word. We, you know, we have a little fair that we started a couple of years ago. And we'll go ahead and make sure you get that information because that deals with abuse, neglect, and exploitation of seniors.
Great. Thank you so much. So it would be great. We'll, we'll try to use our voices to amplify it to whatever spaces that we're, that we're in too. So thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And to Carol and Sonia, I appreciate you going out and putting the effort to get a survey like this so we can see where we can improve. I would say, I know that you do a lot for our seniors in this community. There's a lot of resources. I would even venture to say Las Cruces is a good place for a senior to live. And so thank you for all the work that you do. And this gives an opportunity to see what the survey tells as more of awareness that needs to be done. And we'll all work on that to help you as well. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor, Counselor Flores, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. I have a question. The mayor just brought up a good point. I know that a lot of people look at brochures throughout, when they're looking at retirement. They, they look at brochures. And we had someone apply for city manager position several years ago who came upon Las Cruces when he decided to retire from his town and thought, oh, this would be a good place to retire and become city manager. No, he was not hired. But the point, though, is that, is that information available to maybe from Realize Las Cruces or, you know, some brochure that emphasizes, I would like to think, emphasize for opportunities for, or services for seniors?
Counselor Flores, we do have information available. And if you would like, we can get that information to everybody so that you can have it handy. And if you get asked questions, you have that information available.
Or maybe, it's out of my parameters. I may be incorrect or overstepping. But maybe work with Visit Las Cruces. I mean...
Absolutely. Those are all great ideas.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Carol Bray, for the record, Counselor Flores, I would also add the Access Magazine, which is very good about listing a wide variety of senior programs. Is distributed from Visit Las Cruces, the airport, here at City Hall, all of our facilities. So, that's another way that we have to get the word out in print, which is a way that seniors often favor. But I will also say, our fastest-growing media right now is social media. We're seeing seniors in grow, really rapidly growing numbers on social media. We are not really, I'm not sure how strong of a presence there is in Realized Las Cruces for senior programs. It's certainly a big part of Elevate, too. You know, there is a lot that's called out for seniors in Elevate Las Cruces. So, you know, we feel we have the planning structure, and we're also, you know, fulfilling that with the various media available, but we're always open to suggestions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Sivaki, for your travels and your work. Appreciate you. Next is item 3.2, the Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Designations. Selena Morales.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Councilors, and Administration. My name is Selena Morales. I'm the interim deputy director for economic development. Today, I'm going to be going over some of our metropolitan redevelopment area processes, as well as the new areas that we're proposing for designation. So first, I wanted to start off with a little refresher about the benefits to designating MRAs within our community. MRAs target the elimination or prevention of slums and blighted areas, improving property value and economic activity. They also support local economic growth by attracting businesses and industries, boosting employment, and encouraging private investment. They address conditions that may endanger life or property by enhancing public health, safety, and welfare. Projects often include provisions for affordable housing, recreational facilities, and other community-oriented developments and programs. And they enable the development of improvement for public facilities such as roads, parks, utilities, and public transportation. I also want to go over the process for establishing MRAs, just as a refresher as well. So first, the local government must provide public notice about the proposed designation. Then a public hearing is held to gather input and determine whether to adopt the resolution designating the area as an MRA. The local government must then adopt a resolution finding that areas qualify as slum or blighted areas, and must establish that redevelopment is necessary for public health, safety, morale, and welfare of the residents. Once an area is designated, the local government develops the Metropolitan Redevelopment Plan. This plan must address how slum or blight conditions will be mitigated, conform to local government general plans, and include proposed activities like land acquisition, public improvements, and strategies for rehabilitation and redevelopment. Before finalizing the plan, a public hearing is required to present the plan. The local government may adopt the plan if it meets statutory requirements, including public benefit and private investment potential. And lastly, it's implementation. The local government implements the approved plan, which may involve acquiring and preparing land for redevelopment, partnering with private entities or other public agencies, and constructing or improving infrastructure and facilities. So, when the decision to incorporate MRAs into our community was made, we hired consultants to do an MRA designation report. The MRA assessment was conducted by Grandwick Studios from October 2022 to January 2023. Through a process of research, data analysis, field investigations, and public outreach, these areas were selected as initial priorities for MRA designations. Recommendations are based on the assessment of physical and socioeconomic conditions across several focus areas within the city's infill district. This analysis considers factors such as areas of highest need, redevelopment potential, and the city's capacity for implementation. As part of the process, it was important we gather input from our residents and our businesses. So, the city and consultants conducted various public outreach events to notify businesses and residents about the goals and process for MRA designation. There was two hybrid webinars on January 5th, 2023. There was also a city council work session on January 20, 23rd, 2023, for the initial findings and recommendations, and also two public open houses on the 23rd and 24th of January. With that being said, I also wanted to give an update on the current MRA designations, which is our El Paso and Sal Solano. So, first draft of final report will be presented to staff this week. The final draft to be completed by early May, and final report will be presented to council in early June. For the West Pecacho MRA, consultants will be here this week to meet with staff and public, where they'll go over existing conditions for both groups, and the first draft should be presented in November. So, the next four slides will be the new proposed designations, along with some information that was pulled from the designation report. As a reminder, these areas were selected by extensive analysis of city planning documents, zoning and land use, and social and economic data to identify these neighborhood areas and focus areas. So, first proposed area is the Amador, Proximo, and South area. I'm not going to read everybody, bullet, but I'll go over a few. So, there's 55 businesses that employ 759 people in this area. 74% of housing was built prior to 1980, and the median household income rate is $25,000 per year. Our second area is the Apadaca and Liftup area. There's 40 vacant parcels. 69% of housing was built prior to 1990, and there are deteriorating streets, sidewalks, and street flooding. We have our East of Solano neighborhood area, where 88% of the housing was built prior to 1990. The median household income rate is $29,915 per year. And lastly, we have our Mesquite area. Approximately 93 businesses employ 101 people, 115 vacant parcels. Medium household income rate is $27,313 per year. So, we also wanted to go over the role of GRT taxes for an MRA. Revitalization attracts new businesses, enhances existing ones. Businesses generate sales of goods and services, which are subject to gross receipts tax. The increased economic activity generates high GRT collections within the MRA, which are then reinvested in the area. And this provides the financial capacity to support public services, infrastructure improvements, or other initiatives related to redevelopment area. So, what is the process for starting GRT sharing? Well, first, council designates the metropolitan redevelopment areas. And then economic development provides the designations to New Mexico Tax and Revenue, where they begin data collection to determine a baseline. So, the baseline refers to the initial level of GRT revenue generated within the MRA at the time of its designation. It serves as the reference point for measuring increase in GRT revenue over time. And deadlines for those submissions are March and September. And data collection for the state typically takes about one year. So then, it's the adoption of the MRA plan. Council will recommend the percentage of GRT increment to be reinvested in the MRA. Common allocations range from 50% to 75% of the increment. So, for example, if the baseline GRT revenue is $1 million, and the redevelopment goes to $1.5 million, the increment is $500,000. And the percentage set determines how much of that $500,000 increment is redirected to fund redevelopment projects. So, the council will give the recommendation of the percentage, but overall, it's the state who actually decides what that's going to be, based on what they found in their data. At this time, we also have the ability to amend boundaries if needed. And once an MRA plan has been adopted and the state has enough data to decide the percentage, we can begin the GRT sharing process. So, that concludes the presentation. Some discussion points to consider include the designation of the proposed areas. Please keep in mind, the purpose of designating all four areas is to start the data collection for determining the baseline. Once designations are submitted to the state, we can identify which area should be prioritized for plan implementation. Typically, we budget for one MRA plan per year, so within four years, all four areas will have a plan. To support this effort, we work with our economists and other resources to gather information and data to help determine the order of priority. Additionally, this is an opportunity to discuss potential boundary extensions. These extensions can be included at the time of plan adoption. So, for example, we have the El Paso and Sal Solano coming in June. I know one of the recommendations made was to extend it to university. We can do it at that time. So, do you all have any questions or recommendations?
Thank you, Selena. Counselor Matisse.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question. What, how does the MRA kind of spur on the growth of vacant properties? I see them sort of climb in numbers, but I'm just curious how that can be something that can change what a vacant property might look like in the future with the MRA specifically?
I think we can give more benefits to private, you know, private investors or private companies to be able to give them some sort of incentives, to be able to go to those vacant buildings or vacant properties. So, that's kind of a, it's not against, anti-donation, so in an MRA, we're allowed to do stuff like that.
Can we, can we be a little bit more specific? What, what would those incentives look like? What have you seen kind of throughout the state for stuff like that, specifically vacant property?
We don't have any programs right now ready for that kind of stuff. We would have to definitely determine, based off what the consultants give us as far as the MRA plan, what they recommend and how to, to go about doing that. So, that's part of the MRA plan process, which will have more of those details and recommendations for us to follow.
Oh, thank you. That was one of my concerns, specifically two of these where the vacant properties is one of the huger issues that I hear all the time.
Right.
And we would like that land to be productive and not to have people be speculative about their property. So, if that can move that forward, I would definitely be willing to help in that way. So, thank you.
Definitely agree.
I'm sorry. Counselor.
Thanks, Mayor. And thank you so much for the information. I'm very excited about this revitalization plan and how far we've come along. I'm very excited to see the El Paso and Sal Solano come to us soon, and then, of course, the West Pecacho soon after that. It's my understanding that, so, because the MRA funding opportunity is brand-new, right? That has never existed until now. Nobody, right? No one across the state has been able to-
Correct.
-collect funds from the GRT to, to do reinvestment within those designations. That is brand-new legislation as of a couple of years ago. And so, is it DFA, Department of Finance, Department that we're waiting for further ruling on what that's going to look like?
Department of Tax and Revenue.
Tax and Rev?
Yes.
And so, is my understanding then, from staff, that they will collect one year of data? From, we submit to them our proposal, and then they collect one year of data, and then at that point, we can start that collection?
Correct. And we did ask them if it had to be a full year. It doesn't have to. It's just based on if they have enough data, but it typically takes one year.
Okay.
So, we'll, I know you were, you had asked about Pecacho, and so, once we submit the plan, we'll see if there's enough data, even though it's a couple of months. If not, then we'll just have to wait for the full year.
And then, when can you submit plans to the state for them to start collecting data?
That is March. So, we have our deadline of March, and then it's 90 days prior to July and December.
Okay.
Yeah. So, our next one-
Twice a year?
Correct. So, our next one will be, we're trying to make the, the March deadline.
Okay. I would really love to see the, absolutely, that, like, non-negotiable, that the El Paso gets turned in by that time. And then for me, I think it'd be really important that the West Pecacho similarly gets turned in before that second-
Correct.
Timeline.
So, we have a resolution on March 17th to take these four new ones, and then we will submit all six at once.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. And then, do we, I know, I saw the packet, but there is public comment on the rest of these, on the other four?
Correct.
That people have submitted, their, what they would like to see?
Yes.
Okay. On, on Apadaca and East Solano, can you go back to?
Sure.
I wasn't sure if I saw, oh, yeah, okay. Approximately 90 businesses. I think that's always one of the key things, right? If, if the sizes we have are large enough to be able to sustain a good amount of funding?
Right.
From the information you all have collected, staff, you feel confident that the sizing of all of these are, you know, powerful enough to be able to, to hold a strong fund in the future?
Yes, definitely, especially in this area, just because of everything and all the investment already going into it. So, anything further is going to, you know, do that, be part of the redevelopment. And you can make a case for all areas are all important and, and need help, so.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay. I think this is great. Again, really, even if the other four aren't ready to be turned into the state, I think the first two, El Paso, Sal Solano, and West Pecacho, are absolutely key, that we get them turned in to the state with enough time-
We will.
-for, for them to start collecting that data, and so that we can, you know, I wish everything was faster, but I, you know, I often tell constituents that government moves at the pace of government.
Right.
It's not always as fast as we'd like it, but I understand the due diligence behind it.
And there is, it's new for the state, too, so they're, they're coming out with some SOPs and, and some more guidance, because we're kind of all in the same boat with trying to learn as we go, so.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you so much.
Of course. Thank you.
Counselor Matisse.
Thank you. Could you bring up the slide on the El Paso?
Sure. This one?
Well, the one that gives the number of businesses.
So, El Paso has already been designated. The ones I gave those numbers for were just for the new designations being proposed.
And then, the one you just showed me, that you just had up, what I'm trying to figure out is the formula. In other words, this council will say, we could designate 75%. We could, we could use that percentage of the gross receipts. We could go as high as 75%.
Correct. You can go as high as 75%.
So, those businesses that are operating, I think the one was 90 businesses that you had up, and they will, you, that's the incentive we'll use for the 40 vacant parcels? I was going back to Cassie's question. Is that the funding, that 75%? Where do you, where's the incentive come? From, from the collection?
Correct. Yes, from the collection.
Okay.
Yes.
So, if, if the vacant parcels needed an incentive to reopen or redo that building, would that come from that 75% gross receipts tax?
Yes, that is correct.
And where did that 75% go previously, before the new legislation was enacted? It went to the general fund, or?
Let me ask Elizabeth on that.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Elizabeth Teeters, Economic Development Director. So, currently, so, it's, we're talking about above the baseline. So, those are taxes that aren't even being collected right now. So, the idea is you bring revitalization into an area, and the more revitalization you bring in, the more GRT you're going to bring in, and that's above the baseline, like Selena was saying. So, say that we're bringing in, just to keep it super simple, $50 in GRT in a given area. Right now, that's our baseline. So, in the next five years, say we bring in a few new businesses, and there's higher GRT. So, that means now we're bringing in $75 in GRT. So, the original 50 still goes to where it originally went.
Okay.
And then, out of the extra $25 that, above that, 75%, up to 75% of that would be the revitalization efforts.
Okay. And so, the area is being revitalized to bring in more revenue?
Correct.
And who's doing that revitalization incentive? Where, where are we building, as I come from? Federal? I mean, you're not going to bring in more revenue unless the area is improved. I mean, above the baseline, I, I assume.
Right.
In fact, it could be worse.
Yes. Well, ideally, you would think it's going to get better. Mayor, Counselor Matisse, so, that's one of the, you know, chicken or the egg situations? Because until we get revenue in there, we're not going to get more GRT. So, ideally, we would like to get grants or some kind of funding-
Okay.
-to go directly towards these areas to help spur that development.
Okay. That, that makes sense. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you. I think obviously, the only other example we can look to is the current TID, right? That this is exactly how the TID has, downtown has been revitalized, and it looks now much different than it did 15, 20 years ago. And then, I think, this is why I had included as well, the MRA designations as part of my budget priorities, because we know that while they start that collection, we're going to have to inject funds into, and to jumpstart some projects, right? And so, I think, I've always advocated for, for example, cannabis excise tax to, some of those funds to be implemented into something like this. But I do feel like it is, it should be a budget priority for the first couple of years, for us to be able to, to be cognizant of the importance of the MRAs, and to be able to have our budget reflect that and what we'd like to see, what kind of projects we'd like to see jumpstart, in order for these to ultimately be really successful. Thank you.
Counselor Coran.
So, thank you. Again, this is really helpful. And I'm not sure if you all are looking for us to say, like, other, other things. I, you said the, the extended to university question, and that would be one. I don't know if there's another input point that we would have for other things like that. So, for me, that, that's one of the things that, when I looked at that map, I was like, oh, I would really like us to go the way to, to the university. But there might be other things that I didn't, that was a very initial precursive look. Is, there is another process, like, this is just sort of us saying it, but there are still some details to be determined even after we submit these, right? Like, we can still nuance some of the conversations, what the research is. And then, so that's my first question, is if we say, like, oh, okay, these, these look good. This is where, I hope we're doing this. Will we have another chance to weigh in on exactly what it looks like? Or, I also think, we're trying to figure out, you know, the TID is one model, but I think models where we support people improving the quality- models where we support people improving the quality of housing stock is another, like, I don't know that we've necessarily done that in our model of how we, how we do this, and I think there are a lot of different grants that might be available once we say that these are MRAs. So that would be another thing that I would really ask that we, that we add in as sort of one of the priorities, but I think that's nuanced in each of these, these areas and sort of part of it. So is there another chance for us to weigh in, and can we have some more nuanced discussions about what kinds of development, redevelopment will happen then?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Counselor Crand. Yes, of course, we can definitely set some time up to go over those. And again, once the plan is implemented, is when we can include those. If we have to have discussions prior to that, that won't be a problem.
Thank you. That was one of my main questions.
Counselor Matisse?
Thank you. I was just thinking what Counselor Graham brought up. I, I'm really impressed with the housing, you know, the senior citizen housing on El Paso. And that brings in new people, walkability. And so if you could develop some businesses, then all those people moving into that new housing, as Ms. Graham would say, you know, if you, if you have good housing and you build some businesses along El Paso, you could actually get your baseline up quite, quite easily, that these seniors could use those, those stores.
Yes, Mayor and Counselor Matisse, definitely. It'd be a definite benefit for them.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Selena. I appreciate you all. Next is item 3.3, the GO bond quarterly update. Mr. David Sidio.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is David Sidio, Public Works Director. Also with me is Natalie Green from our Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization Manager, and we'll be providing the 2022 GO bond quarterly update for you this afternoon. The four projects associated with the GO bonds in 2022 are the new fire station number nine, the continuation of the East Mesa Public Rent Complex, affordable housing, and park improvements. For fire station number nine, we had updated the last quarter that the project was awarded, was awarded to White Sands Construction for $11.1 million. They began construction on October 28th. Currently, they're at 10% completion. They have done earthwork. They have finished the sewer roughens and working on the electrical roughens. They will soon start on the water and storm drain improvements on there as well. And lastly, they will be working on the rebar for the pad foundation as those roughens get approved. Want to go ahead and share with you some photos of the site itself. What you're seeing here on the left-hand side is an aerial view of the pad itself with some of those roughens. And off to the right, you will see more pictures of those sewer and electrical roughens that are going in. This project is currently on schedule. As you can see, we are now moved into construction, and we are scheduled to have an estimated completion by the end of February in 2026. The park improvements, we have La Llorona and Tell Brook Park improvements. La Llorona, that contract has been awarded to Mans Construction in the amount of $1,39,331.20. At this point in time right now, construction will start as soon as we get that final approval of the International Boundary Water Commission's lease agreement. Previously, we had updated that that was being worked on. There was some language that both the city and IBWC had looked at. We're working on getting that modified. That is going through the process. We are anticipating getting that lease agreement signed either this week or next week. Once we have that, then we will move into construction. There was some language difference on some enforcement issues at the site itself by IBWC, which was reviewed by both our legal department and the commissions as well. As I had mentioned previously, the remaining funds are going to be moving over to Tell Brook Park. That is to replace identified exercise equipment at that park itself. Both Parks and Recreation and Public Works staff have identified those pieces of equipment, and currently, we're looking at getting quotes to have that equipment replaced. As you can see, here's the schedule. We are stretched out a little bit on our schedule based on the lease signing. We anticipated that this was going to happen in quarter four of calendar year 2024, 24, but we're starting that hopefully here in quarter one. As you can see, we are still slated to complete that by the end of this calendar year in 2025. For the East Mesa Public Rent Complex and the continuation of it, at the last meeting, we'd updated that the shade structures were going to be installed in January. We do, we have had a delay in the fabrication of those structures. Currently, we have received half of those structures. The other half are still being worked on, and we're anticipating delivery by the end of this month and early February. We are scheduling and looking at having those foundations drilled on-site mid-February. The inclusive and adaptive playground equipment as part of Phase One has been awarded to Exer Play. The vendor will be providing the equipment and doing the installation. That contract cost is $1.1 million. Now, construction for that, we're anticipating it will begin in May, and that is because we have a 12-week lead time on those pieces of equipment. Once we have those, then we can begin those installations and prep work on-site. For the other portion, the continuation funding for the East Mesa Public Rent Complex, the design has been completed. We're at 100%. And at this point in time, we're going through the procurement process of getting cost for those improvements. Once we have those and we agree with vendor, then we'll be moving into construction for that. Just a reminder of what those improvements will be on the continuation. We have eight sand volleyball courts. We have two basketball courts. We also have an umpire and IT room, bathrooms at the Ten Acre Park. We also have other street furniture throughout the complex and more playground equipment. And here's the schedule for this project here. This has seen a little bit of delay as well too, but if you look at the end of when we're anticipating that construction to end, we are still anticipating closing this by the end of 2025 in quarter four. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Green.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Natalie Green for the record. The first project that we're using GO bonds, funds is Three Sisters. They are 70% complete. The mural will also be starting soon. They're still at 80% pre-leasing. Buildings A and B, which is the one that's pictured, are actually almost ready. They're just waiting for some inspections to wrap up, and then we're hoping for a TCO. And then the parking and landscape should be done. The entire project, we anticipate, will be done in March 2025, so save your date for a ribbon cutting. We'll be celebrating that project. Padrina is at 60% completion. Again, the duplexes are almost completely done, so we'll also be looking for TCOs on that one. The main building is getting drywall and insulation, and then the leasing, some of, some residents have already been contacted about leasing, but there's a pretty big waiting list. But everyone should be outreach to starting in the spring, depending on the other floors. Peachtree Canyon, they've completed the roughin and grading of the sites. They've started the, the building pads for at least five of the buildings and done the plumbing and electrical installs. They were supposed to start pouring concrete this week, and then the framing should also start this week as well. Actually, the pouring of the slabs was last week, and then this week is framing. Arcadia Phase Four, our real estate services is still drafting that purchase option. Otherwise, we'll be coming to council shortly for that approval. As part of that, we're also looking for potential expansion of the revolving loan fund. We were able to use the pilot program to fund the construction of three out of 10 houses, and all of those 10 houses have closed, and we got our funds back into our loan fund. So we're working on re-loaning those for the next phase of single-family in Metro Verde. And then just a general update, we're not using GO bonds for Amador Crossing, but I like to share anyways. We did have our groundbreaking the first week of January. We're on target for a 15-month construction. Again, the hard construction costs, so the, what we're paying the contractor is about $12.8 million. The total development cost is at $15.6. We've secured the $11.4. And we do have three funding requests pending, including the New Mexico State Legislature, which we'll be advocating this week, and I'm happy to announce that we have preliminary notice on a $2 million forgivable loan, so it's essentially a grant, but it's a loan. And so we're just wrapping that up, and our new gap going into this week is just about 2.1 instead of the four. And with that, David and I will stand for questions.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Natalie. Any questions? Counselor Flotis?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Natalie. I know that's heartbreaking, David. You're relieved, I'm sure. Natalie, thank you for the good news. So the Amador Crossing, the funding is pretty much complete, and the state, how did, how was that funded?
So the $11.4 is made up of 5.9 from last year's capital outlay, $4 million from the Tellshore Fund, and then 1.5 from Housing New Mexico Housing Innovation Grant. And then the, the new $2 million that we'll be bringing in is also from Housing New Mexico as a forgivable loan.
Great.
And then the remaining gap of 2.1 is part of our advocacy efforts for capital outlay this year.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Round of applause? No, thank you all for the update. All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So move, Graham.
Second.
This is on the motion to adjourn the work session. Counselor Mcclair?
Yes.
Counselor Matisse?
Yes.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Crand?
Yes.
Counselor Flotis?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes.